Good evening and welcome to this June 28 City Council Public Hearing and Meeting, and Meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency. But we'll begin with a public hearing, and Manager, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is an ordinance on modifications to the Transportation SDC methodology or System Development Charge. This public hearing is seeking comments for the proposed ordinance and two resolutions that will update the Transportation System Development Charge methodology. SDCs are intended to provide an equitable means of funding capital improvements that provide capacity to serve growth. An update of the Transportation System Development Charge methodology is requested so that the revenue and expenditures align with the goals of Envision Eugene's comprehensive plan and support the funding requirements of the 2035 Transportation System Plan.
Great. Thank you. I will open the hearing. We have three speakers, and just a reminder, those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form to the Information Desk prior to the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And our first speaker is Tiffany Edwards, followed by Ed McMahon.
Good evening, Mayor Venice and members of council. My name is Tiffany Edwards. I reside in Ward Seven, and I'm a neighbor of the Santa Clara neighborhood. I'm here tonight to speak to you on behalf of the Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce about the proposed changes to the Transportation System Development charges. This issue was a tough one. Our local Government Affairs Council spent many hours deliberating on this topic, following a presentation by city staff and two follow-up meetings. On one hand, the business community supports the course set by the Transportation System Plan that moves Eugene away from infrastructure solely focused on automotive means of transportation, and we're a partner in the efforts of the city's Climate Action Plan. However, the costs associated with moving us in the right direction have never been higher. Lumber, labor, and other materials are at an all-time high, and while we have little control over many of these costs, it is important to recognize that the cumulative impact of piling them on isn't a formula for success. We are counting on this industry to build denser, build greener, and build us out of the housing crisis. Council has directed a process to identify barriers to affordability, supply, and options for housing for which the Chamber is actively engaged. Through that process, we also hope to identify solutions that can be applied to put us on the path when it comes to prioritizing the initiatives that are community values, things like the construction excise tax and the multi-unit property tax exemption, or MPT. We as a community are also engaged in a number of initiatives such as clear and objective housing standards, urban reserves planning, implementation of SB 1051, missing middle housing, et cetera. They're all a smaller part of a larger conversation, and if we don't look at them collectively, we're going to miss something and make mistakes. Last week, LGAC voted to support two components to the Transportation SDC policy moving forward. Number one, a phased-in approach so that as we're working to remove barriers, the industry can absorb the shift in costs to minimize the impact to the market. And number two is a 100% exemption for structures defined in the code as accessory dwelling units. These structures have been identified and prioritized by policymakers as critical and much-needed housing infill to help address our housing crisis. It's imperative that the city of Eugene participate in these statewide efforts and do our part to allow these units to be constructed as easily and affordably as possible to a homeowner who wishes to build one on his or her property. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed McMahon, followed by Tom Walter.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. I'm Ed McMahon. I'm the Executive Director of the Home Builders Association of Lane County located at 1065 River Road. I don't envy the situation you find yourself in this evening. The transportation plan was approved months ago, yet only recently you learned about the financial consequences of that plan. A plan that increases single-family SDCs by 1,300 bucks, almost a 50% increase. That's a huge increase at a time when we are diligently working toward discovering ways to decrease the cost of housing. In a few weeks, you will learn the financial consequences of the Parks Plan that was approved. That information isn't available now, but you'll find yourself in that same situation again very soon. In my opinion, approving plans before knowing the financial consequences is one of the factors that has contributed to our housing crisis, a good example of putting the cart before the horse. If you were to know the financial outcomes ahead of time, you would have the ability to adjust the projects to result in a scenario that would be in line with your top priorities. Once again, in my opinion, it turns out that some of the projects we approved in this plan are aspirational at this point in time. We simply cannot afford them right now. It would be a terrible mistake to go ahead and approve the Transportation SDC methodology that's been presented to you. Approval would only take us further away from important goals we're currently working on. It becomes obvious that we simply cannot afford all that we'd like to have right now. The only fix is to find out what projects can remain on that list that would result in no increase in the Transportation SDC at this point in time. Yes, it would take more time, time well-spent, and it would keep us on track with our goals. Taking this action would also illustrate your commitment to working on our housing crisis. Something has to change, and you're the leaders that can make the positive impact. I request that you find the courage to make the changes necessary, and I thank you for your community commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker on this, Tom Walter.
Tom Walter, resident of Eugene, 2863 Riverwalk Loop. So pardon me for not having my thoughts completely brought together on this, but the main idea that we've been working on lately having to do with the housing crisis and just the costs of housing, to provide housing in the city of Eugene and how it's escalated, you know, I can't help but look back to the early 90s when we adopted our first Systems Development charges, and I'd pay $400 for a building permit and $1,200 or $1,300 total for my -- all the Systems Development charges. And so here we are, just a couple decades later, and just the incremental increase in one System Development charge is going to be greater than the whole burden in 1994. So we are facing a real problem. I lost an employee this week because he can't find a place to live. Makes $40,000. He lives in Eugene. He and his wife cannot find housing. They're leaving the area. So all these things incrementally just make it more and more difficult for us, and it's easy for a government entity to say, "We want to do this stuff. We need more money. Let's use Systems Development charges." It's the vehicle. All these vehicles add up to making housing less and less affordable. So I think we need to really think hard as a community before we place additional burdens on housing. Thank you.
Thank you. So that closes the public hearing. The queue is open for councilors who want to come, and I have Counselor Clark. Anybody else? Okay, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. I have mentioned my concern with this topic several times. In our last discussion on this issue, I don't mean to pick on my friend Counselor Pryor, mentioned that the difference between $302,000 and $303,000, I think was the example used, and it was a relative point that I understood. A small increase isn't enough to, you know, be a huge problem on the average. But statistically speaking, $1,000 knocks 250 people out of the ability to afford a new home. Each increment of that increase in cost does that. And we're not just analyzing the increase to the Transportation SDCs here, and whether or not this is wise, we're going to have the Parks SDCs. We got a note just a few hours ago that the stormwater increase is coming, and it was -- it said a 4% increase across the board, but the residential, single-family residential portion looked to me to be closer to 20 or 25% increase. The stuff we're considering with the CET adds even more. Now we're into multiple thousands per house, and we're knocking thousands of people out of the market, I deal with this every day, of buying a new home. And if we're actually in a housing crisis, I would urge my colleagues, I think it's wise for us to consider other options as we move forward. And I guess I would ask the manager, will it require a motion from council to consider an SDC that would have a zero increase? In other words, how much work would be involved in us saying which projects need to be removed from the TSP in order for us to have a $0 increase in our SDCs?
I think what we would ask is a council motion to say that that's what your intent is, and then we could go do the work and bring that back to you.
This is a public hearing night, so it's as near as I understand it, unless my colleagues refer to inappropriate for such a motion, but I will bring that back to ask staff what would their recommendation be if we wanted to keep the SDCs at the level they're at and not increase them, and thus not increase the cost of housing in our community yet again. So I hope my colleagues will consider that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Yeah, Counselor Pryor.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because one of the considerations of the SDC was the ability to waive it for affordable housing, so that you didn't knock a lot of people at the affordable level out of the housing market. The SDCs would be mitigated or waived at a lower level. And determining what that level was where you would not charge that SDC, I think, is an important consideration for exactly the reasons that Counselor Clark mentions. You don't want to take people who are struggling to buy their first home, who are at that affordable level, and knock them out by adding fee after fee after fee. I agree with that point. And one of the parts of this formula is to not have it apply at that level where people are struggling to buy their first home. It would only kick in once you had elevated to a level where people theoretically should be more able to afford the home and be able to absorb that kind of cost. So that's an extremely important point, that you not just charge SDCs all up and down the entire spectrum of housing, that you do take into account the affordability question. And I think part of this methodology is to consider waiving or mitigating SDCs, not just for transportation, but for other SDCs, all across that affordability level, and I think that is part of what's going on here. So I think that is being -- that point is being accommodated, or at least we're making the effort to accommodate it.
Mayor, what I would just say is, you know, we are planning on coming back with a work session here before your break to have a fuller conversation about these things before you would be asked to take any action, and so we are coming back with a work session.
Great. That'll be helpful. Any other -- Counselor Semple.
Thank you. I was confused at the work session. I didn't realize that SDCs were going up. And it does seem strange to me that we're talking about incentivizing things by having some people's charges not go up as much as other people's. But they're still going up, so when people say, "I can't build this because the fees are too high and the charges are too high," well, now they're going to be even higher. So I'm just -- I'm a little concerned about that. I realize that if you exempt them all the way, it didn't go higher, but I've got some more thinking to do about it. Thanks.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, I was going to reiterate what Counselor Pryor said, and you don't necessarily have to do it across the board. You can selectively do a section of, say, homes under $250,000, $300,000, or exempt from some of these SDCs or lower SDCs. So you get some paying zero and some paying some, and so -- and that would help create the incentive for the affordable housing portion of the housing crisis that we have. We don't have a housing crisis for really expensive homes. That's not our crisis.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mayor.
Oh, sorry, Mike.
Sorry. Thank you. I appreciate the sentiment of my colleagues. I would say that, working in this industry every day, I know that each of the different levels of housing, depending on affordability and depending on people's incomes, are all interconnected as a system. And you don't move or alter one without affecting the other, sometimes positively, sometimes negatively. And so I would say you're correct. There's probably a balance here on which things to incentivize more than others, but I would urge us to consider that the effect has -- it has meaning across a spectrum of dollar amounts on everyone, including those at the lower end of it. And Mr. Manager, if I could, you've just kind of indicated that we're going to kind of talk about this before we come to the approval for the SDCs. So are we going to have conversations about the TSP? Are we going to have conversations about different -- the effect on the SDC amounts for different levels of discounts depending on housing price, or how are we going to do that?
Let's make a correction. We're planning on coming after your break, not before your break with that work session, and then to have you have an opportunity to take action after that. So it would be after the break when we'll be coming back with a work session. But normally what happens after these--
If I could, I apologize. So we won't actually work on the approval for the methodology until after that's done, is that correct? After that work session?
Correct.
Okay.
And so I think what the intent generally of these things is, after you have a public hearing, we often will come back with a work session for the council then to have further guidance before you actually take action on any particular item, not just this one. So that's often a regular routine part of your process when we have these kinds of ordinances that are more than routine ordinances.
Yeah. Thank you, Sheriff, very much.
Counselor Sayred.
Thank you. So in anticipation of that work session, some questions I would have that weren't clear in the work session we just had was, when was the last time we increased our SDCs? And how did staff determine that the particular level of increase that's being recommended is the one that we -- that makes the most sense, or why was it the one that made the most sense? So a little more justification of the specific recommendation. And then I would not be interested in revisiting the Transportation System Plan and pulling things out that we say, "Oh, we're going to kick that one to the curb." But I would want to know that if we changed the recommendation -- from the recommendation that staff gave us, where would that recalibrate the revenue, and how would that affect our ability to carry out particular items in the transportation plan? So that would be a framework. I would be willing to look at that in, but not about rejiggering the whole plan itself, but where might we then have funding gaps for the things that have already been identified in the plan? Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, I was -- two things. One is a zero increase in the SDCs would severely, I believe, hamper our ability to implement the CRO and the Climate Recovery Ordinance and what we're trying to achieve there. And then -- and so I think we would want to see that analysis as well. And the second thing is, maybe I have an outdated schedule, but I think we are expected to, in end of July, approve the SDC methodology.
Well, I think--
Which doesn't preclude us from exempting a portion of it later.
Yeah, but I think based on the conversation, we're going to relook the July 23 piece just based on the previous comments I made. And so what I would suggest when we come back for a work session on this topic, that that'll be a good time for the council to talk about what's the information that the majority of the council would like to have brought back, because some of these items will take quite a bit of effort. And then I think we just need to agree on what information is like for us to bring back, and so it would be helpful to have a broader conversation around that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Oh, yes. Counselor Evans.
Can I get in here?
Yes, take it away.
Yeah, there's a couple things that I think that we need to be, you know, considering in this conversation is that, at the same time we're talking about, you know, the Transportation System Development charges, we are also having a parallel conversation about the construction excise tax. And both of these, if you double down on both of these, that may continue to hamper our ability to create affordable housing and also put an undue burden on, you know, home builders who are trying to, you know, provide, you know, housing supply for the area. So I think we need to be very cautious in terms of how we look at both the construction excise tax proposal as well as the, you know, Transportation System Development charges, because, you know, we -- I think we need to provide some balance here and not really try to pile on in terms of adding more burden to being able to create housing supply and affordable housing supply.
Okay. Thank you. And did you have one more, Counselor Clark?
Yeah, just real quickly, I will say, in the interest of no surprises, that I will have a motion the effect of a comment earlier. I will have it later. Years ago, the legislature, in its wisdom, decided that ballot initiatives and other referendum that went before the voters needed a financial impact analysis to go with that so the voters could make a good determination about the things that they were deciding on and the impacts that they would have. So I will likely have a motion that will, if not make -- done at the same time, at least get closer to parallel our approval of major plans like the TSP and our approval of major changes in SDC methodology, so that we can have a broader conversation about, these are our aspirations and these are what the costs are, and have a more balanced conversation. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to add that I was interested in the two comments that Tiffany Edwards made about the LGAC and their recommendations, so it'd be good to actually have a little insight around that as well in our follow-up. So, okay, I think that closes out that hearing and discussion, and we're ready for now the second round. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This has to do with the supplemental budget, and this public hearing is an opportunity for the council to hear from the public on the third FY18 supplemental budget for the city. The supplemental budget recognizes new revenues and authorizes other unanticipated changes in legal levels of appropriations for the current fiscal year. Approval is requested tonight in order to allow for necessary legal appropriations.
Great. And I'm assuming we don't have anyone to testify, so I will open it for comments from council. Counselor Clark.
I just asked my colleagues for a moment of silence, as this is the first time in living memory that we have not had John Borowski with us to make a comment tonight, and as a citizen member of the Budget Committee, and then just as a citizen who was concerned for so many years, has added so much to our thinking, but the university has gone and graduated a bunch of people, and so he has to work this evening and can't join us.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other -- Counselor Semple.
I just have a quick question. It says, "Decreased central services operating appropriation," and then near the end, "Public Works gets $35,000 for the Parks Ambassadors Program." I thought that was coming from the levy.
The supplemental budget is for the Park Ambassadors. We added this fiscal year, so the levy kicks into place in July, and that was part of our overall downtown plan. Thanks. Okay.
Any other questions or comments about this? All right, we ready for a motion?
Do we have a motion on this?
Yeah, a move to adopt.
Well, let's read it then appropriately. I'm sorry for being ill-prepared to read that. Here we go. I move to adopt Resolution 5232, adopting a supplemental budget, making appropriations for the city of Eugene for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Counselor Evans?
Aye.
Eight. Thank you very much. That passes, so that closes that. Thank you. And now, item number three. Manager?
This is a public hearing and action for the FY19 proposed budget, and this public hearing is an opportunity for the council to hear from the public on the FY19 budget for the city of Eugene, as approved by the Budget Committee. And the council is asked to take action tonight on the budget to allow for necessary legal appropriations.
Do we have any -- no, and there's no one to comment on that? Any councilors needing to comment or question about this? All right, we're ready for a resolution?
I move to adopt Resolution 5233, electing to receive state revenue sharing funds pursuant to Section 221.770 of Oregon Revised Statutes.
Second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Counselor Evans?
Aye.
Eight in favor, and that passes. Thank you very much. And now I believe we have another resolution related to this. another resolution related to this. Another motion related to this?
Yes, Mayor. I'm, I move to adopt Resolution 5234, certifying that the City of Eugene provides the municipal services required by Oregon Revised Statute Section 221.760.
Second.
Bless you.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Counselor Evans?
Aye.
Eight, and that passes. Thank you. And then finally?
I move to adopt Resolution 5235, adopting the budget, making appropriations and determining levying and categorizing the annual ad valorem property tax levy for the City of Eugene for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019.
Second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Counselor Evans?
Aye.
Eight, and so that passes as well. Thank you. And so with that, I adjourn the meeting of the Eugene City Council, and I open the meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency. And again, I turn it over to you, Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is a public hearing in action on the adoption of the Urban Renewal Agency FY19 budget. And this public hearing is an opportunity for the agency board to hear the, from the public on the FY19 budget for the Urban Renewal Agency, as recommended by the Budget Committee. The agency is asked to take action tonight on the budget to allow for necessary legal appropriations.
Okay, do we have anyone to, and we have no one to speak? Any comments or questions by council related to this? All right, so ready for a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 1087 of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Eugene, adopting the budget, making appropriations, and declaring the amount of tax to be certified for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019.
Second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Counselor Evans?
Aye.
Eight, and so that passes. Thank you very much. And with that, I will close the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency and open the next public hearing. Manager?
This is an ordinance concerning Otzen Stadium. And this public hearing is an opportunity for the public to provide feedback to the council on a proposed change to Chapter 4 of the Eugene City Code relating to consumption or possession of alcohol in unlicensed public spaces. The requested change would allow alcohol consumption from four to six hours, but not earlier than 7:00 a.m., in parking lots already designated for this use near Otzen Stadium in advance of game kickoff time, to allow with the proposed expansion of parking hours.
Thank you. So we have three people wishing to speak. And just a little reminder, if you wish to speak, you need to fill out a form. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward, if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are red lights on the timer. The red light indicates the end of the three minutes. And the first speaker is Eric Rodell, followed by Mike Duncan.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name again is Eric Rodell, Deputy Athletic Director with Oregon Athletics. I am a Eugene resident at 2154 Sparrow Court. Thank you again for your time and consideration. This is a proposal that we have vetted within our university community, as well as with our neighbors around the Otzen complex. And really, the genesis of this proposal is our attention to the fan experience and our ongoing efforts to create an atmosphere around our football game days that continues to attract and draw fans from all over the state of Oregon. 60% of our current football season ticket base comes from beyond Lane, Lynn, and Benton Counties, which means they're driving a significant distance, often three to four hours round trip to come to Oregon football games. So it's truly an all-day commitment to come. And what we're doing through this proposal is creating an opportunity for them to spend more times with friends, with family, at Otzen, and experiencing that football game day, which for many is an experience that really extends beyond the game itself, and it's more of an all-day event, a social event. A review of parking practices around the PAC-12 and nationally at the Power Five level revealed to us that our current window for tailgating and for parking is really quite restrictive at four hours. Within the PAC-12, only the University of California is at four hours. The rest are at five-plus hours. Our neighbors up the street, Oregon State, open their lots at 7:00 a.m. on football game days, regardless of the kick time. And again, throughout the Power Five, that window is generally longer, creating that opportunity for people to come and experience game day. Another element to this proposal is the potential of easing congestion and traffic flowing into the Eugene community on game days. By expanding that window, we create more opportunity for people to come and potentially also easing some traffic and congestion up and down the I-5 corridor, depending on when Oregon State is kicking off, if they're playing a game on the same day. So in conclusion, Oregon football is a really special part of our community. It's critically important to our success at Oregon Athletics. We generate over 70% of our resources through Oregon football. That goes towards supporting all 450 of our student athletes and our broad-based success. And obviously, Oregon football also has a tremendous impact on our community at large, economically and otherwise, visibility. So thank you again for your consideration, and we appreciate your, your time.
Thank you. Mike Duncan, followed by Matt Carmichael.
Hi, I'm Mike Duncan with Oregon Athletic Department, and I'm a resident of Eugene in Ward Two. What I'd like to do is read a letter from our neighbors. We have a number of neighbors around Otzen Stadium that also provide parking for the events at Otzen Stadium. Mayor and city councilors, we write today in regards to the University of Oregon's request for a city code change to extend alcohol consumption from four to six hours, but not earlier than 7:00 a.m., in advance of game kickoff time, to align with their proposed extended parking hours. The UO has reached out to each of us, seeking our input, and we have no major objections to this code change. Working to enhance the fan experience and ease the impact of traffic congestion in and around Otzen Stadium on game days is important to all of us. For many of us, we rely on parking revenue to help balance our budgets or provide extra service to our community members. Two additional hours should not adversely affect our normal operation. We want to support UO's efforts to create a positive fan experience and continue to see the football program prosper for all of us. And that's signed by representatives from the Eugene Science Center, Boy Scouts, who also provide the parking for Serbou and Lane County Mental Health, Emerald Valley BMX, and Eugene Masonic Lodge. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Matt Carmichael.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Matt Carmichael. I live in Ward One with my family, and I'm also a double duck parent. I'm your Chief of Police currently at the University of Oregon. And just to echo what you've already heard about the change in hours, I'll give you my perspective as the police chief. First and foremost, by extending these hours, we're definitely going to see an ease in the traffic congestion, I-5, and time in the city will spread out. People coming to visit UO and visit our great city of Eugene. Secondly, about regarding alcohol consumption, after about 16 years in campus policing and other, too many in city policing that I won't share, it's been my experience that by extending the time doesn't increase the amount of alcohol one person consumes. Matter of fact, there are some arguments that it would actually reduce that rush feel to, or that speed to want to drink more in a short period of time. That's been my experience, and that's been the experience of my partners in the PAC-12. After doing a little bit of research with my other, other constituents across the country at length, I found the same feedback, that the extending of hours actually improved the fan experience and helped from that public safety experience by spreading out folks who attend the game, and then extending the opportunity to enjoy tailgating. The stadium, so you know, is fully patrolled by the UO police. We patrol the parking lots during tailgate. We work very closely with Chief Skinner and the EPD on making this work on game day. Those partnerships have proven successful. In terms of alcohol, I think sometimes we don't, this kind of goes unnoticed. We average about 55,000 fans per game, and yet we probably experience 30 to 33 ejections on average. And quite frankly, not all of those are alcohol-related. So the reality is, UO fans come and have a great time, and there's a very small percentage of those that we have issues with regarding, related to alcohol, less than probably 0.05%. So I appreciate your time this evening, and I hope you will support this change.
Thank you. And so that closes that public hearing. Ends the public comment. Do counselors have comments? I have Counselor Clark in the queue. Anybody else? Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate those who spoke. I found it very educational. For example, Eric's comment that Oregon State, I think he mentioned a football team. I was unaware of that. So that's, that's educational. That's good. In all seriousness, Mr. Manager, this can have an effect both financially, even though the university does a wonderful job of paying for the expense of our police department that often works for the traffic portions of, of the day there. I would like to know if there are any associated costs for us to, to increase the length of that window, or ill effects from the staffing requirements that'll, that'll come from that.
We'll provide that information as part of the, when we come back.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. I tend to be supportive of the idea. I just want to make sure.
Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, the same question about additional cost. Also, the, the major question objection that I've heard so far has been the amount of alcohol consumed, and that just, more hours means more drunk people. And I've heard anecdotally that cops would rather, are one of the worst shifts to work on is, is after football games, especially in the evenings, because of the amount of, of, of alcohol-related incidents. So while I appreciate the chief talking about his experience, I wonder if there's any data that could bolster that, that we could get from the UO or other folks about that issue for the work session?
Yeah, we can work with them and try to provide whatever data that might be available, any of that.
Any other? Oh, Counselor Pryor.
Yeah, I mean, along those same lines, something that I had heard, and what you could, as you're collecting this information, you could provide for us is, in order to avoid people putting on an all-day drunk, is that there was also a plan, it's either already in place or would be part of this, to if people come in, the game starts, they're there, they want to leave and go out and have a little bit more to drink, and then come back, they would be prevented from doing that. So they couldn't just go out and keep drinking all through the game and then keep coming back in until they're, you know, have had too much. If you come in for the game and you leave, you cannot get back in. And I think that's a part of the proposal, in which case, that would, that would probably help a lot with this, going out and just drinking all afternoon. Could you confirm that? I think, I think that is part of the plan, but if you could confirm that for me, that would, that would go a long way towards saying you're not just providing hours and hours and hours of drinking fun during the game.
Yeah, we'll provide confirmation.
Great. Any other comments, questions? Okay, I think that closes that. And then we are ready for our final action.
Do you want me to?
Yes.
Oh, I can.
I guess I do. I guess I do. Thank you.
These are resolutions on the sale of general obligation bonds for street and bike and pedestrian projects and parks and recreation projects. The resolutions before you tonight provide authorization for staff to issue debt for the general obligation bonds for streets, bicycle, and pedestrian projects approved by the voters in the November 2017 election, and the geo-bonds for park and recreation facility projects approved by the voters in May of this year. Resolutions authorizing bond issuance after an election are usually on the consent calendar. As there is no consent calendar on the agenda tonight, these resolutions are presented for your approval.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clark?
May I ask a question?
Yes, sure.
Manager, I was under the impression, obviously incorrectly, I think, that when the public votes on a bond, that that's the authorizing mechanism, but it seems that's perhaps more of a advisory vote, and that we're doing the authorizing mechanism with this vote? Is that correct, or could you help me understand that better?
Tyler will come up, so I don't misspeak, but I believe that's the maximum amount. Sue's shaking her head. I'm just going to let Tyler talk.
So the voters are authorizing the, the bond. This resolution actually authorizes staff to go out under a variety of scenarios that are detailed in the resolution to go forward and actually issue the debt. But the voters have already authorized the bond.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
All right. Okay.
I'm a details guy, so, all right. I move to adopt Resolution 5237, authorizing the sale of general obligation bonds to fix streets and fund bicycle and pedestrian projects, and to adopt Resolution 5238, authorizing the sale of general obligation bonds to fund park and recreation projects.
Second. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? Counselor Evans?
Aye.
Eight, so that passes. Thank you very much. And I think that is our final piece of business. Thank you.